Alright, so we're recording. DPW Board of Commissioners Tuesday, February 9th. Call 601. I guess I just want to. Glad to see everybody's back. We don't go into too much detail, but. You know, we're back full staffed. As far as the office goes, so. For all of you, Dennis and Bruce, Amy, everybody. Glad to hear you're all back and. Covering. So we got the minutes from the January 12th meeting and Amy had sent out. We have motion by Ken to accept the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second motion.
Alright, all in favor, go around my screen. Ken?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay. Abatements, additional commitments. I just kind of emailed out. So these are. The continuing saga of trash. Amy, I guess that the. Reader's Digest version, there was just a couple little errors or things like that that. We need to.
Yeah, so can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Having a problem with my audio. Lonnie, I guess, had some issues with the first three packets that you guys had voted before. One of them was too much. One of them was not enough. Bruce has the breakdown of each packet. Lonnie went over them with him today. Bruce, I don't know if you watch.
Yeah, so the first packet was the previous. The previous voted abatement was $50 more than it should have been because there was duplicate senior discounts. Something about a. Something about a break in the line between when Mary Beth posts them and Lonnie posts them was the best I can decipher, but that was off by $50. Because of two senior duplicate discounts. The second packet. Same thing, but three senior discounts, so $75. That's the difference between what was voted before and what's being asked to vote tonight. And then the third packet was a. $50 difference in the senior discount and one of them was because the owner that was over 65 moved. So they no longer, that that household or unit is no longer eligible for that senior discount. And then the rest of the packets, you know, self-explanatory that this senior discounts, people have gone, had private contractors. But we're getting billed a vacant building, an incorrect code, meaning it should have been a single family and it was a two-family. And that's the same for the rest of the packets. The very last packet. Partial trash abatements and those are for new homes. So we don't give partial, we give six-month minimum abatements for somebody who has been a trash user. But for a new building, a new home that's just been built, didn't seem fair to do it like that. So we actually do it, you know, by the month. So if they move in, in, you know, March, we only bill them from March to June 30th. And or if they move in in November, December, we bill them for the month they actually got it their first year that their house was built because it wasn't an existing customer.
Okay. So I emailed out the list. I'm not going to go through and read all these. You know, I think what I would entertain as a motion based off the information that I sent out to the board for the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine different packets. You know, for the various different abatements. And couple commitments.
I make a motion that we accept the nine packets. Emailed.
Motion by Wayne, second by Mark. Call in favor, Ken?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I mean, yes. Before we get off trash, what do we, as far as the senior discount, because I think we probably spent more money and. Manpower than the discounts. This is now set up. That if they got a discount last year, they'll get a discount next year. So we don't have to go through this. And I'll use the word foolishness because I think it is foolish that not to give a discount, but that, you know, we have to do abatements for senior discounts every year. This is.
It hasn't been done yet as far as with the IT director and the billing software, but. We are going to have it. So starting next fiscal year, there'll be no repeat abatements. If the only time that's going to happen is similar to what I just talked about where somebody over 65 sold their house. Otherwise, that house will automatically get the abatement each year and it will be built into the software. So I agree. This foolishness isn't gonna, we're not gonna have to run through this every year. And, you know. My opinion on whether we should be giving out these. Abatements without any kind of proof of hardship or anything is a different subject, but we didn't vote that, so.
Yeah, I mean, the selectmen voted the senior discounts. And then. I think it's the easiest way and the cheapest way, you know, we're spending way too much time if we had a. I mean, ballpark, how many, how many senior discounts were there? Few hundred, seems like, or?
Quite a few. I don't have a total number in front of me, but there was quite a few of them.
Yeah. I'm looking at this one, 225, just in one packet. So yeah, if the system can be set up and if they got it last year, they get it this year. You know, they'll build. We'll have to do some. Auditing of that every once in a while, but. I think that makes more sense. And I don't know what the rest of the board thinks if.
Well, having conversations with the town treasurer, the town, Mary Beth, she, she thinks that's just, you know, the way to do it. Make sure that it's automatic, it gets rolled over in the software and we. As a DPW, we'll have to monitor houses sold, which we do anyway, because they come in for the final readings for, for the waters, meters, et cetera. So we, we have firsthand knowledge every time a building sold, so we should be able to monitor that.
Okay.
I'll forget to monitor mine.
We're gonna send you a bill in Plymouth.
House of correction, hopefully.
The one with the padded walls?
Yeah.
Okay, well, hopefully we're done talking about trash. At least as far as abatements and commitments and. And all that.
Last note on that is that I was assured today that as of today, we are caught up, caught up on all outstanding abatements and everything is squared away. With us, between us and the town hall and the billing. So, you know, the only other things that might come up are new homes or things like that. But as far as past stuff where. I'm told we're good.
That's good. The only other week item we had in the new business was Mark, sounds like he got a question on. Well, you already want to get out? You already questioning how long you're gonna be here?
Yeah, let's talk about.
I didn't know. Yeah, I actually didn't know he was actually, that we were going to discuss it. I thought it was something more of the selectmen. On, so Kevin, I think this appointment was lines up with yours. Actually, Wayne was the one that actually let me know because. I wasn't really sure, but I believe Kevin, it runs the same timeframe as yours.
Yeah, so you inherit what was left of.
Yeah.
Bruce.
I just, I seen on my card, I had seen on my card, I don't know, I had looked at it and saw that it expired in just a few months, so. Why, I was surprised because I haven't, if not, I would have to do something, you know.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't expire in a few months.
Right.
It should be next year.
No, I, so I did reach out. And, you know, I think it's also it should be 2022, but.
Yes.
Correct. Yep.
See Dawn down at the town clerk's office, she'll be able to correct it for you. Issue a new.
Yeah, well, I brought it up to her. I sent her an email. She got back to me and said, I think it was overlooked, you know, so the card was filled out with 2021. So I don't know what the process is to change that, so.
Just go up, you just go up to the town clerk's office and get a new card.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, she was gonna bring it up, I think, to the selectmen, but I don't, you know, I don't think it's even actually on us. It's not like I, you know. I think, I'm not sure if it's on us. I think it's on, on the selectmen. For that appointment, you know. On the card being signed anyways.
It's, it's, you're appointed to the remainder of the term.
Yes.
So because they made a mistake on the cod, that doesn't change the term.
Yeah.
So you'll be 2022.
Well, you guys only have to worry about me here for a couple of months, so.
Are you here for at least a year?
Not updated anyways, they're.
Okay. Yeah, because Wayne is up this year and then, yeah, it'll be me and Mark and 22 and. Ken and Dave will be 23, so.
Both say Dawn again because she did send an email out saying that you were all set through May of 2022. So you should just be able to go up to her and get a new card.
She sent you an email? Did she send, Amy, she sent you an email on that or was I on it?
Bruce, I don't think you were on it. Bruce, you were on the email.
Yes, I was. Let me see. Yeah, but it was an email, I think Frank had checked into it and then he sent an email out saying that. Nothing really needed to be done on Mike's behalf. It was, it does go to 2022. I think the technicality, if you need to go up and get the cod redated, that's all you need to do.
Yeah.
Nothing needs to be done as far as the selectmen or anything like that.
Yeah, I'm not really worried about the card in my wallet.
Card carrying commissioner.
Some people have been known. To take that out.
Flash it, flash it back. I'm just glad, Mark, you weren't emailed on the, the link, you know. Yeah, yeah, why involve him? Very scary. That stuff happens all the time. You're the commissioner. It should have been sent to you, not to Bruce and Bruce's cousin and Amy and it should have gone to you.
I, yeah, you know, I wasn't really worried.
Okay. Um, we had an executive session, but I don't think we have anything scheduled. Is that correct, Amy? I think we just put it on there just in case we.
Yeah, he didn't call in if he had any new information for you all, but he didn't, he said if you didn't hear from him, then he had nothing new to give to you tonight.
Okay, yeah, and I think.
He wasn't sure whatever they were drawing up was gonna be ready in time, so obviously that didn't happen.
Okay, yeah, I think everyone got the information, so we'll. You know, we'll post it again for next meeting. Hopefully there'll be some, some resolution to it and we can. Officially put it to bed. He was looking into some things for me as part of that, too, part of the final settlement.
Kevin, Dawn had mentioned to me about Wayne leaving and somebody, if anybody was available, that was gonna take papers out to run in his squad. So I just figured I'd mention that to you that if anybody knows of anybody.
I think Ron said he was taking papers out.
Oh geez, don't say that. Please don't say that. I resign.
I guess, yeah, we'll have a vacancy in May.
Yeah. I.
All right, I had a little fit there.
I forwarded that email to all the board members about the appointment, just so you'll have it.
Okay. Yeah, sure. Misery loves company. Is that what they say, right? Misery loves company?
Well, Wayne, you're not gonna be gone for a while, so make.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going anywhere till at least September, so.
You know, it's all done as of May this year.
Can we get a temporary restraining order? I mean, a temporary extension order from Wayne?
I have an ankle bracelet. Can't leave the premises, can't leave the city limits.
I will monitor. Who runs?
Monitor who runs, okay.
I'll just leave it at that.
Well, I mean, that's. You're gonna be out September. You make a lot of decisions till then.
Correct.
Yeah, it could be a help. Yep. I mean, we haven't had a contested race in, I don't know how long, to be honest. You know, it's been, I don't know if there's ever been one, to be honest, maybe one year.
Yeah, you have to get interest first, right? I mean, let's you guys know somebody. Any other police officers?
Volunteer is not big on folks' agendas anymore.
No, 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 especially with politics, but let's not go there.
Alright, um. It's under old business, Complete Streets. So. The. There was an estimate and some projected costs that went out last, before last meeting. I had gone through it, Bruce and I. Were going back and forth and we had some. Meeting set up with environmental partners, but it just didn't happen with some of the other things that were going on, so. Bruce, thank you for resurrecting that again tonight. I replied to it that I could do Friday, so. The. The thought is, is we sit down, or it's not sit down, I can't sit down anymore, get on a call with environmental partners and kind of trim the fat a little bit. To try to get that, the cost down, there's some things. That I think can just be absorbed, you know, kind of as almost incidental to the contract or. You know, yeah, it showed on the plans, but just included in your price type thing. And I think some of the scope needed to be clarified of what the town's doing and what we're gonna ask of the bidders. So. I would.
Yeah, Kevin, I think you did a good job trimming that up. I mean, you know, obviously if all of them will be taken out, but.
Yeah, it just, if it's there, one, they may use it and two, we gotta track it. I mean, when we don't have any. Construction oversight, it's not that the project doesn't need it, you know what I mean? So that's just gonna make more work for Bruce and/or Dennis to. You know, hey, I did this or that, or I, you know, put out an arrow board or put some cones out. You know, it's a simple curb and sidewalk job. Small little guys are gonna bid it. And then I think, you know, ultimately we can get the cost down. Now, the other side of it, I'd like to hear some opinions is we're not gonna have enough money even by trimming the fat in the grant. And, you know, there were some emails flying around and some different, you know, I think Bruce, your, your thought was just take it out of chapter 90. Which is an avenue and I know. Kennedy expressed some. Concerns with that and to try to get it out of the town, I guess I'd like to hear what. Anyone else on the board or what the thoughts were or.
What's the, what's the final, what are we looking at dollars wise? So I believe that, I think we, I think our award was. Three, in the 368 and the bids, the bids are coming in. I think we're gonna be doing the job for, you know, a hundred grand more than that. So. We have, and that's with, you know, DPW taking on, you know, some work, which is fine. I mean, it's not, it's, it's rip out, it's cutting asphalt, it's things like that. Certainly, it's a good job for us. My concern is, and we do have, you know, I got a budget. You know, budget balance from the state last week, when all the bills are paid. For all the work we've done up to now, chapter 90 wise, we'll have around 150. Balance and that, that doesn't include new money that gets voted at our May town meeting and is available to spend July 1st. So my opinion would be to get our final bids. And then go, I can go to chapter 90, state DOT and say, look, we, you know, I need to use X amount of dollars, a hundred thousand dollars out of, you know, balance of chapter 90 funds to. To fund the completion of a complete streets program. That's perfectly fine. The chapter 90 is allowed to do that and. And then we can go ahead and start this project, you know, before even our May town meeting. If we delay it and we look for funding elsewhere. A, you know, we're at the mercy of town meeting vote on the project that's already, you know, three quarters funded or more than that. And B, we're delaying it to start. After June 30th. This is just my opinion, but I don't think we should delay it a second. I think that we should get on it as soon as possible and. And use chapter 90 funds to complete it. In, in, in the last part of that is we are on the clock because we've already gotten one extension for this job.
Right.
And that brings us until like next fall.
Yes.
That's another factor.
Gonna do as far as your road repair that you might have had scheduled or set up or. I don't know, whatever the case for this coming fiscal year.
So it really doesn't affect what I had planned as far as, you know, what we were thinking about using chapter 90 money for. Because we knew all along that the grant was not gonna be enough to do the whole project. We knew that pretty much from the get-go. The estimate came in higher than I expected, for sure. But I think we knew all along we were gonna be using somewhere between 75 to 125,000 out of chapter 90 to, to do the whole complete streets job. So it's, it's, it's not something that we, I wasn't anticipating.
So Bruce, you said we have about 150 left over?
That's correct.
And. What, so that's been voted at town meeting. I know we don't get specifics. We just say for various roadway and sidewalk improvements. And that's enough. To. Put that into this project? Has that been, been cleared with?
Yes, so that, that money is available to spend because the town meeting voted it last May to spend on roadwork in general, not specific projects. So the only hoop that I have to jump through, once we have the file number, is just basically sending a one-page project request form. To state DOT 5 and, you know, Sean Sullivan and everything now is done via email. I, I just scan that. I just scan that document and send it to them and usually it takes less than a week to get confirmed by. The higher ups in the DOT. And that's still gonna leave us money left over in that 150. Yeah, it should, yeah.
Yeah, I think if we don't have that, I don't, it's the same thing, we can't even bid it, you know what I mean? So that this is. In that delay that, yeah, you gotta wait till May town meeting, but then you gotta bid it and you're not doing it till July or August.
I just, this is just my opinion, guys, but I think that we should get as many projects done as quickly as we can and, and, and just get them done, you know?
It sounds like a good plan to me, the way you got it, you know?
Yeah, and it frees up my crew, you know, so we'd get to work right on that, right? You know, say, say April or May, best case scenario, gets my crew rolling on. Our part of that before the contract comes in and then, you know, we have other things up our sleeve for highway crew, you know, another curbing job. On Washington Street, you know, from Dewey Ave to Jenkins Ave. You know, that didn't get done years ago when they did Washington Street. We have the curbing in stock at the yard and, you know, my guys are just gonna take on that project, you know?
I, I agree. I think we move it forward with. You know, this has been a little slow in design. I. What I'd like to do Friday, Bruce, when we meet with environmental partners, obviously get them to trim this down and consolidate some of this stuff, clarify the scope. You know, there's some water work that. We're gonna volunteer Dennis to do a couple hydrant adjustments, thing like, things like that. And then we push environmental partners, you know, a week, two weeks tops to, to get this together and get bid documents. So we're. We're, we're advertising first of March. You know, something like that.
Bruce, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the entire sidewalk, right, from Washington down? That's correct. That'll be sidewalk from Washington at Park. You know, we'll rip out the, the existing sidewalk and curbing that my crew, so I cut it, ripped that out and then that will be new sidewalk and concrete curbing down to. The new police station.
Okay.
Where they had the new sidewalk and curbing as part of that project. And then a couple of those, you know, items, we still have the bump out that's part of that. And, you know, part of their environmental partners was to do a couple sidewalk ramps on, across the street, which I think some of, a couple of those things we, to trim the fat will eliminate. Because frankly, they don't need to be done. We just, we just want to stay on this, the one side of the road. Well, that, that sidewalk is, it's just a disaster over there. It's an accident waiting to happen, so. Right. Like I said, the sooner we can get that done, the better.
Yep. Okay, any other comments? Questions, concerns?
You got a list, Bruce, of roads that are gonna be done with chapter 90 and if they've been cut to, I guess, take care of this extra money that you're chuckling around?
Well, I have a whole. List of the, you know, the windshield road survey we did a couple of years ago and, you know, it's, it's fluid. But I think, you know, a couple of roads that I'm looking at this year, if, if I want to spend all the money on one road, I was looking at Pleasant Street. It's, you know, Pleasant Street is a main road. It's got a serious crown problem and it's, it's breaking up. And, you know, it's used heavily now from people going up Franklin Street and connecting to Route 58. And, you know, there's a couple side roads that, you know, Laurel Ave right across the street from the post office is a mess, the grade's way off. That is a. Total reconstruction that would be ripped out and, you know, they'd have to go down a foot, regrade it. So for a short road, that would be a little bit of money. But that being said, you know, we, we have the. Chapter 90 money that comes good June 30, July 1st and we also hopefully will get the. Annual dollars that we've been asking town meeting and they've been saying yes to the last couple of years, the 100,000. So that, that should allow for a side road and a main road. And that's, that, that 100,000 is on the warrant, correct? Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we have, we have, we still have finance committee meetings and, and building project committee meetings.
Right, I know that, yeah. And I think it's important if, if there's, you know, rumblings that they want to cut that 100K that, you know, we're, we're taking out our coffers. To, to fund this project, you know what I mean? If we're gonna spend 100K for this out of our chapter 90, well, you know, let's get 100K out of the general budget.
Yeah, it's just gonna go to roads, so.
Right, it's, it's all going to road sidewalks and betterments and, you know, and I think. You know, some things, yes, we hire, but we do a lot of things ourselves and that saves us a ton of money.
We put it towards Park Ave now, then we won't have it.
Right.
And on the roads there that you're talking about, Bruce, Pleasant Street, are you gonna do the island there like you had talked about? Reducing the width of that road down at, I guess, South Ave, I mean, yeah, South Ave?
So that's a good question. I, I think that if we do Park Ave, it may be smart for us, I mean, Pleasant Street, sorry. If we do Pleasant Street, it may be smart for us to stop somewhere after Reed Place as you're heading towards South Ave.
Right.
Just because we, we're looking at some bigger projects that would do all kinds of reconfiguration of that whole area near the old East End via station. I, you know, as they call it, put that on a road diet. I mean, that's like four lanes wide coming down that hill. So we do have, we actually have preliminary plans that show some things. uh, some things that, you know, we could do with that whole area and, and they're kind of extensive. You know, with tree planting, adding, you know, things in front of the four hundred block, but so it might be smarter for us to just stop somewhere short of the old fire station intersection, the top of the hill for a future project. And that section going down the hill isn't all torn up or anything like that anyway, so.
That's gonna be a big project.
That's a big project and that could be one of the ones that are, are part of the federal thing that, you know, takes seven years to get, you know, before you even put, uh, you know, a bucket in the ground.
Yeah, cuz that's, I mean, that's close to the T station, so.
Right. Chips program, that's what.
Yes.
Yep.
I know that area pretty well, Bruce.
Yes, you do.
Um, no, no pocket issues lately, unfortunately.
Right.
With businesses closed.
So I think that's I, I like the plan. I think it gets it moving. Gotta get this going and, um, take advantage of a very competitive bidding market. Nice project coming right out of the season. You know, someone can bang this out in a month and go on to the next project in, you know, May or June, so.
Not, not to mention getting it off our agenda.
Took a while. So we'll, uh, sounds like Friday, Bruce, they were available, I'm available, so we can, uh, sorry, I'm reading. I'm the host. Um, you know, hopefully we can hash this out on Friday.
So you're thinking they're gonna, you're gonna hash them out, hash, hash that out with them Friday? And then we'll have maybe a, a vote on this for March, early March or?
Well, I think it, at that point, it'll be bid documents. So, um, yeah, there's really nothing, I mean, with, with I don't think there's anything to vote. I just want to get them to get the bid documents.
Yeah, I was just taking a vote, you know?
Get it advertised. And then it'll probably be, you know, once we get the number, then we'll have to do some votes of, okay, we'll take this money and move that and.
Okay.
All right, next. Sewer Force Main. I told Ziad, he was all, you know, he goes, I can attend, I can attend. I said, there's no, that there's not much news. You know, I emailed everyone out. We did not make the list for the state revolving fund.
Yeah, it's too bad.
For the, for the two percent loan. Um, and talking with Ziad, he, um, he said they cut it by about half of what it had been in past years.
What's the, uh, what's the going rate from banks now?
Dennis, do we, are we, we thinking like a half percent? I, I think we, I don't know what we have officially.
All right, can you hear me?
Yep.
I can hear you.
All right, so, um, Mary Beth had quoted some, um, rates that were around two point three, three point three four. Uh, I believe through, uh, UniBank, um, for just straight financing. An attractive thing about the SRF was the, um, um, principal forgiveness.
What, what was that percentage again? Two point three?
Um, two point three four, I believe was what the one of the, you know, she had laid out a couple of different scenarios. Um, but around, you know, two, two point three, two point three four.
Okay.
Last time she checked. You know, I, I me- I believe I mentioned this before, um, um, you know, we, of course, we're gonna have to raise the rates in order to, to, to fund this. Um, and whether we want to do that, um, prior to the next town meeting. Uh, we'll start reading meters at the end of this month. And, uh, of course they'll bill in on April fifteenth. Do we wanna, um, and you need a, a thirty-day comment period, I believe. Um, whether the board would want to raise the rates prior to, uh, getting the money for the town, town meeting.
Dennis, let's, let's start with, um, so, yeah, it's probably gonna cost us a half a percent. Um, but I guess what I'd like to ask Ziad or maybe town treasurer, whoever could do it, what, what is gonna be the impact? You know, not getting the SRF. I mean, the project has to move forward. We can't wait another year or, you know, on the, hey, maybe we'll get it next year. Um, so I think it's important that we just know what, how much more is this gonna cost us, you know, over the, over the life of the loan and, I mean, like I said, some of the, the benefits that the SRF gave us. Is that, Dennis, if you could work, I don't know, like I said, Ziad, I guess Ziad could probably help us with that. And, and run the numbers. You know, I'll, I'll say two and a half percent just to make it easy math. Cuz we need to factor that in. I think we still, I don't think we're gonna increase the, the, uh, borrowing or what we're thinking for a cost, but um, I think it's important that we know that. On the rates, I, I, you know, we talked a little bit last time that when we knew the town meeting wasn't happening, the special town meeting wasn't happening. Do we make a small increase now? You know, we're, we're forecasting, what, three dollars?
And that, that forecast for Mary Beth's figures.
What'd you say, Dennis?
That the, when we, when I calculated a three dollar in- increase, that was with using, that was using UniBank with Mary Beth. You know, at two, at the two point, you know, just under two and a half percent.
Yep.
Um, so, you know, we're, it's not like we gotta, uh, uh, re-figure that or, or go to three and a quarter or three fifty. We just, you know, it's, the idea of the, if we'd have done the SRF, you got, we could have probably reduced the rate sooner. You know, after we increased it. But, um, it's still, you know, it's still gonna be the three dollars per, per a hundred. Uh, we need to add. The only other thing I can comment is that, uh, me and Ziad and I are going to meet with the DEP for the wa- water quality certificate. Um, uh, right, uh, for the easement. Um, basically they just want to kind of have a site visit and, uh, I think see some faces. Uh, we're gonna do that on the twenty-third.
Okay. Um, I guess what's the thought from the board about? So Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, do we we posted for the next meeting? And people can attend or join or, but what's the exact process? Or do we?
From what I understand, you, you would need to, you would need to vote to increase the rate or, or to, to, your intention to increase the rate. And then you would have, then you have to, um, as a public utility, um, uh, allow a thirty-day comment period before you actually increase the rate. I believe that's how it's gonna work anyways.
In other words, if you talked about a rate increase, no matter how much or whatever, you'd have to post it immediately after this meeting prior to our next meeting.
If you wanted to make the April fifteenth billing, yes. So you, basically.
Yeah, the increase would have to be voted on at a meeting and then a thirty-day period after that.
Yeah.
Um, and then, then it's if there's no comments, then it, it just goes into action, you know? I don't think there's another voter or any secondary vote, you know, it's, uh, you know, we, we make it available, we you know, all we can do nowadays is post it on website or whatever.
Dennis, what's our current rate now? What's?
Uh, for sewer, it's, uh, four, four, um, twenty-five. No, I'm sorry, four.
No.
Uh, four fifty.
Four fifty.
Seven twenty-five for water and four fifty for sewer.
So we're checking, we're, we're gonna, projected we're gonna go up three dollars on that side on the sewer side.
Per hundred, yeah, three dollars on the sewer side for per hundred. And, you know, I guess we're one of the few towns where, um, sewer currently sewer is, uh, less money than water.
Well, it's just, we want to get ahead of it, you know? If we're doing it, if we're, you know, we're already behind with the meeting being canceled, so.
What's in the, what's in return, uh, retained earnings now?
Um, it's been a little bit since I've looked, but it's like four point, four point five.
So it's, it's going down?
Um, you know, we're not getting the, uh, the, the big money out of construction like we used to.
Right.
I think last year was our, you know, our best year in a while. You know, I mean, whenever somebody hooks up a two and eight inch line, there's, you know, fifty grand.
Right.
And Dennis or Amy, what, what's our billing volume? So say, say we do a dollar increase, just throwing out an easy number, what's that revenue for a reading period roughly?
Um, I'd ha- I'd have to look at that code.
I think that's what I want to know is how much we're gonna increase. I don't want to slap everybody in the face with something huge, you know? But I think something, obviously we're gonna need to go up. At some point, we're gonna have to go up, so.
Well, yeah, it's, it's an, it, it's like Mark said, it's inevitable. I mean, you, we're looking at sixteen million dollars. It has to be paid. We're gonna have to bond it and it's gonna have to be paid and we're not taking in the money um, from revenue to pay that. I mean, we're skating by now.
Yeah, the, the three dollars, the three dollars comes from what it would take to pay the loan.
Right.
You know, in, in, you know, they, you know, a twen- a twenty-year loan. And, um, based on what, you know, what, uh, the gallons that we're selling now, um, you know, what it would take to pay that loan off. Um, and of course, you know, as time goes by and if things look better, you guys always have the option to reduce the rate.
But maybe we can get a, uh, an estimate like say for a dollar or seventy-five or a buck and a quarter, whatever you guys think, you know, just to say what it's gonna be for, I guess, the average. I don't know, that's just, I'm just throwing something out there.
I, I, I think I, and this is my opinion, guys, you might differ, I don't know, um, if we go up a dollar and a half right now, oh, we, we proposed a dollar and a half, um, we're at six dollars.
When would that take effect though? Would it take, uh, for the April readings?
Yes, it would take effect of the April billing, yep.
It would.
Yep. Yeah, that, that's to get out of it. So using the numbers, when we were estimating the three dollar increase, um, Dennis had done the math and it was about two hundred and fifty dollars per year for an average
user.
Average user, so, you know.
So if we go up a dollar and a half right now.
Dollar and a half, yeah, you have, you're a hundred and twenty-five.
Right.
Per year, so this billing, again, just using fifty, fifty, you know, sixty, seventy bucks.
Yep. I mean, that would be, that would be my, my suggestion would be a dollar and a half. I mean, we're gonna have to go up that anyways. Uh, but we stay ahead of the curve and, uh, we can't let the, uh, um, the retained earnings drop.
No, no.
Because if something happens, we're in trouble.
Wayne, are you saying go up a dollar and a half now and then we'll go up another dollar and a half for the September billing or no?
Yeah, but we'll go up a dollar and a half now, uh, and not three dollars now.
Right.
Right, cuz what's, I mean, we're gonna go to Maytown meeting, obviously with this article and I'm, I'm optimistic it's gonna get approved because it's one of those, you have to do it. So come whatever, June or July, or however, we're gonna start paying for it. You know, we're gonna take the bond out and pay for it. So, you know, if we do a buck fifty now, we're gonna have to do the buck fifty in September.
Right.
We don't, we're gonna do the three bucks in September. It's kind of, you know, um, we, we gotta pay the bill.
One big whack, yeah.
Right, right. We gotta pay the bill.
Yeah, I like that idea, what Wayne said, go a buck and a half now and a buck and a half later.
Should I put that in a form of a motion?
Yeah, certainly, you certainly can. You just did.
I will, uh, I will make a motion that, uh, we increase the, and, and believe me, you guys know as well as I do that I'm the last guy that wants to do this. I'm totally against it since I walked in the door, uh, but we, we don't, we don't have a choice. This project has to go forward or we're gonna have sewer bubbling up in the woods in Brockton. And we're talking, then we're talking millions of dollars and we're in trouble. So, um, I make a motion that we, we go up a dollar and a half uh, per a hundred cubic feet of sewer effective. Oh, I'll just make a motion that we go up.
Yeah, second motion. Good. We have a motion by Wayne and seconded by Dave for a dollar fifty increase. Um, are there any other discussions?
Yeah, I just want to, yeah, maybe make it a, an amendment to that, that maybe in September or August, we go up the other dollar and a half. So that we have it for the September.
That would be a new motion in September.
Yeah, I would wait till, I would wait till this.
We sort of.
Be a new one, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Like you said, you have a timeframe for people actually, to actually, uh,
Right, sure, yeah.
Address that.
Address it, yeah, all right.
And, and I guess our, our hope is that maybe the project comes in, bidded, bid a little under budget and maybe we don't need the full buck fifty. And, you know, that, that's the other side too. You know, obviously by then we'll, we'll have a project value. Um, you know, we, we would have, you know, um, by that point even have a contract, hopefully.
And, and we'll also know what we're paying for interest, we'll know, we'll know a lot more things.
True.
Um, as far as, as, cost goes, um, we'll have an exact, we're, we're close to have an exact figure, you know?
Maybe we won't have to go to three dollars, you know?
That makes sense.
Yeah. So.
Okay. So we have a motion by Wayne, seconded by Dave for a dollar fifty increase on the sewer rate, uh, to six dollars per hundred cubic foot. Uh, all in favor, we'll go Wayne.
Hi.
Dave. Mark.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
And I am a yes. So Dennis, I'd assume, um, is it Public Utilities Commission there that we may have to notify or we can talk offline or um, about what the with the official notification process is, you know, we've made the vote. And, and just to document that side. So I don't know if that's just a, hey, we, we advertise it or we is it the Public Utilities, I forget the exact name of the board, the state board?
Department of Public Utilities.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, DPU, yeah.
DPU. Dennis, you're mute. I don't know if you're talking. Sorry. He wasn't here. You had a, you had, you back muted again. There you go.
He is.
All right. Um, so like, like I said, I kind of, I ran this by Frank before that, that was our intention. And, um, you know, to raise the rates that, you know, I checked with Ken Lidle as far as the, you know, we're to, to to make the payment, we need that, you know, we're named, eventually gonna need the three dollars unless, unless it comes in cheaper. You know? But, um, I can find, like I said, I'll, 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 I'll make sure that I get the, the, all the particulars. Um, as far as, you know, uh, what the procedure is, is how you go about making notifications.
Yeah, and I think Dennis, i- if you already haven't, do we do a, a follow-up meeting um, with, with Ziad and Collector to officially get them moving on procuring funding, you know, now that we know SRF is out?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I, I'm not sure, I'm now that, you know, the SRF is done, uh, how much Ziad will, I think it's more on Mary Beth than anything now.
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, he can provide the financials or the estimates like he has, you know, I think he's, he's willing to help out wherever we need him to, you, you know, um, and, and he had told me he had numerous, he had multiple proj- none of their projects got funded. He had, he had a project. He had, he had a project of Stoughton.
Yeah.
Couple other ones that so he's dealing with on, on multiple levels. So the big, big projects got funded, that was about it. So, um, yeah, so if you can start those conversations, because town meeting will be here before we know it and we'll want to go right to bid right after that.
Right.
Um, I think everything else, contracts wise and design and all that's moving forward, um. Um, we were asked to attend, um, facilities, capital uh, projects committee coming up on the eighteenth, um. Dennis came up with a good idea, like, you know, FinCom wants to meet us too and the town administrator wants to talk about it, let's get them all together at the same time, so we don't have to keep doing this over and over again. Um, so I'll follow up with, uh, chairman. And, um, set that up. Again, Ziad is readily available whenever we need him to. Um. So. We're moving it forward and hopefully we get a bucket in the ground come July. Ziad has, um, had some conversations just throughout the industry and they, he's, uh, uh, very confident about his estimate and even thinks that the market, the market will still be there come June, July. So after that, it might get a little, you know, who knows, but I think it'll still be very competitive then.
Okay.
I had some other stuff on funding that I think we can just, we'll kind of tape one hour, we get the final numbers. Um, you know, last time I did talk about some type of, um, quarterly report for the retained earnings, I had a couple ideas, um, Dennis, I'll, I'll get them over to you. Obviously, the last few weeks have been a challenge for, for you, so I'll let you get up to speed and you know, just a simple little report that, you know, kind of what Wayne was just saying, we can have bidding balance, ending balance, you know, projected debt. Um, you know, what's coming off the books this year, what are the bills we paying, you know, and just get a better idea where that, you know, where the enterprise fund is, um, you know, any type of trends we can see and, you know. Said the last thing any of us want to do, we all, we all pay the sewer bills is, is raise the rates and you know, a document like that I think may help us, it will help us, uh, just to better manage that fund.
Yeah, right.
So I'll, uh, I'll pass along some ideas I had on that.
Okay.
Excellent. Anything else on sewer? Uh, last we had the new DPW building, um, so Ziad did mention to me, um, he wanted to come up to the site with, um, I believe a couple of his architects and kind of meet with, uh, Dennis and Bruce and I'd say if anybody's available, I'm sure he'd, uh, entertain guests and just kind of take the next step. You know, what do you want, what do you don't want, what do you like, what you don't like, um, you know, and kind of develop the the scope a little more and a little more, uh, detailed plan. So, um, I told him I'd pass that along, Dennis and Bruce, I'll leave it to you guys when you get some time. Like I said, I think he wanted to come out and, and kind of, you know, like kind of what he did before, but bring his architect. And, and keep that moving. Uh, no, I'm, I'll leave it, there's no date, Ziad, you know, understands these, you know, they're, they're coming back, so I'll leave it to Bruce and Dennis to I won't attend, I won't be able to attend, no matter what day it is, to be honest, I'm just too busy, but, um, you know, certainly, as long as it's no more than two board members. So you guys can just follow up with Ziad. Keep that moving forward, hopefully.
That sounds good. We had a, we did have one walkthrough with Ziad and his architect. And then he had mentioned that day that the architect was gonna, gonna want to come back and do a secondary walkthrough, so we're ready to do it whenever they want.
Okay. Yeah, just reach out. They're pretty flexible.
Hopefully, hopefully the architect, architect's not going to use what's there now for me ideas.
Well, I dare what we don't want.
It's dumpster.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, we just went to San Francisco.
Yeah, it's a quick trip. I have a couple things if, when you're ready, just I'll make, I'll be brief.
Yeah, yeah, it was good. You and Dennis are next, what do you got?
So, I just for a point of information, uh, we sent up a letter to the town hall today, which we typically have to do every winter to uh, request permission to deficit spend the snow and ice budget. As you know, we get a hundred and twenty thousand each year and I believe we had forty something thousand left and we were sending up sixty something thousand in bills and we still had a couple contractor increases from the last storm and I just ordered four hundred ton of plow yesterday morning, so. You know, we'll be getting up there, but it's, 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 it's a routine thing, you know, very rarely do we not go over the one twenty budgeted. Um, and, uh, moving on from that, um, one of our, on Super Bowl Sunday, one of our sander trucks was involved in a minor motor vehicle accident, um, in a neighborhood and it was, he was coming down a little hill and there was a, there was a ninety degree turn up there and uh, Westwood Drive off Old Mansion and the truck went straight when the road curved and he took out a mailbox and he did hit a car that was in the driveway. Uh, the mailbox took the brunt of it, the car got a broken directional lens, no dents in the metal or anything, so. The homeowner was very upset, not very nice about it, but he will just go through the channels, they'll put a claim in, it will get taken care of. Uh, no citations or anything, uh, neighbor that saw it happen, stated that the truck was going very slow and it just didn't get any traction going around the corner. Um, was anyone glad that nobody got hurt? Right, nobody got hurt. Just saying.
That's good, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and just, uh, for, for another thing, we, it may end up coming to the board, um. Our policy for mailbox damage during snowstorm is if the mailbox is damaged by the power of the snow or the force of the snow coming off the plow indoor, the plow nips it like with the edge of the plow blade, then I don't replace, we don't replace those mailboxes because in my opinion they're in harm's way. That's where the snow goes. So when I do replace a mailbox is, for instance, that accident, you know, it was an accident, he went off the road, he wiped out their mailbox. Or if somebody say is backing up on a corner, to clear a corner or something and he backs into a mailbox, for instance. But just from the force of the snow or maybe the, the edge of the plow blade clipping it as we go by. You know, I don't, I don't replace them and I stand, you know, I stand, uh, adamant about that and so most homeowners take it, okay. So there is a homeowner now that's, you know, gone to the town hall, sent emails to the new town administrator and may not let it drop, so we'll see if it comes, if it comes before the board, but I, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, that's the policy you've always gone by and yeah, I think it's a good one. I, I, there's not too many municipalities out there that replace mailboxes at all unless it's, you know, the truck goes up on the lawn or something crazy, you know? And, uh.
Administrator is not going to replace the mailbox, right?
No, I don't think so. I don't think he has.
I was just.
You know, right. That's all I have, those three things.
Okay.
I got a couple of things, if you got a minute.
Yeah, Dennis.
Um, so remember we talked about the emergency response plan and, um, uh, we were going to get environmental partners to, uh, uh, update the current one. Um, but what we have currently is a plan from two thousand and nine, um, that's in a, in a book form. Uh, that was written by CDM, um, of course, it's, it's extremely out of date. So I, I, uh, asked, uh, environmental partners, you know, what there was involved, if, if they were to, um, and they've, you know, they, they've emailed me that they're doing, you know, uh, this for other towns. If I ask them for a price for what it would cost, and I was a little shocked that it was, it's their, their, their proposal list was seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to, uh, up, you know, rewrite the current emergency run, response plan and also the other, there's a part two to this, it's a risk and resilient C assessment of the water distribution system. Um, uh, you know, in other words, where it could be sabotaged, um, or poisoned. Uh, and it's, uh, that they are, the, um, uh, the EPA is also, uh, asking for. Um, at that kind of, you know, uh, I was under the impression that, you know, at that kind of money, uh, you gotta bid this out. Um, but apparently engineering services are not, and it's not required. Um, I don't know what, what the board thinks about that, that kind of money as far as asking somebody else. Could that, we could always ask CDM if they wanted to, uh, uh, give us a price. Um, there's also, you know, I get, get emails every once in a while from company or places that offer to do it, um, you know, advertise that they do it.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
The, the water distribution system is through Brockton. So I don't get, I, I don't, I don't know.
I, I agree, it's a lot of money, these, you know, unfunded mandated requirements. Or, um, I, I would say we definitely should shop it, y- y- you know, um, you know, we all like environmental partners and they do good work, but I think as, as a board, we, those type of monies, we should um, you know, consult some other firms. Um, you know, CDM. You're going to get what you get, um. You know?
Dennis, is this like a cut and paste for them or?
Yeah, so I, there's got to be a cookie cutter type of.
Saying is like, um, Brock, is Brockton done this, a whip out of Brockton or, you know?
No, it, first of all, you, you know, I mean, we get, we, we are supplied by, um, um, by, uh, Brockton, but you know, we have our own distribution system and, 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 uh, you know, piping. We don't have any, uh, reservoirs or storage tanks, but, uh, um, you know, the, everything, Brockton really has nothing to do with what, you know, the pipes from the inside or with them. Um, and they, they belong to us, um, and it is, it is a little unusual that, uh, you know, that, uh, uh, you know, we're a small system, you know, um, in the grand scheme of things. Um, we don't, like, we don't make our own water, we, uh, we purchase our water that's, you know, ready to use, ready to drink. Um, so, um, I'm, like I said, that, that's one of the reasons why I thought the price was, um, excessive.
Yeah, I agree.
But like, the, 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 um, there is the, uh, also though, the, the other part of the, the, the risk assessment. And, and what they're talking about is, you know, you know, is to be, you know, let's say outlandish here is, you know, what's the chances of somebody with a, um, you know, pesticide truck full of pesticide backing up to a hydrant and, uh, start pumping, you know, dumping it into a, you know, the water system, um, tho- those kind of things. Um, which, you know, I think I said is pretty outlandish. I don't think we have, you know, we don't have any, um, uh, weaknesses as far as like the recently, um, somebody hacked into a, a treatment plant in Florida and changed the chemical dosage, it's, um, um, you know, we don't, we don't have that, um, um. I really don't, um, we don't have any open reservoirs where, you know, somebody could dump something in.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, it, it just, uh, I, I don't know why that we couldn't, um, adjust our, our plan that we have now um, to reflect two thousand and twenty-one, but I mean, I get seventeen thousand dollars is just crazy.
Dennis, did, Dennis, did they give you like a breakdown? You know, was it so much for the plan and, I mean, because obviously the risk, the risk assessment probably has some field time, you know, if they have to come out and you do, you know, a survey of
Right, you know.
The lines are.
They did, they did send a proposal and I can, I can forward it to you guys if you like. Um, uh, on, they also, uh, they also do, annually, they help with the, uh, annual statistic report and the consumer confidence report. And, you know, the price, I got a price of thirty-five hundred for that, which is much more in line with what I thought this would be. Um, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of research in both of them.
How often, how often do we need to do this? Is this kind of a, you do it and it's good for another eight, nine years or?
No, five years. The, uh, the, uh, yeah, the, the, um, emergency response plan would be, is a, you know, it gets updated every five years. And I, you know, the one we have is ser- I mean, they list, um, I believe they list Donnie Westover as a contact.
Who did all that?
CDM.
CDM.
Yeah, in two thousand and nine. So that's, you know, that's seriously out of date. Um, but, uh, uh, the emergency response plan is a, is a, a five-year thing and so I believe the risk and, risk and resilient, um, um, uh, assessment would be for five years too. Um, annual statistic reports and consumer confidence reports are, are every year.
I mean, it, it, this couldn't hurt, I mean, reach out to CDM, they did the report before, I mean, twelve years ago.
Right.
Couldn't hurt to reach out to them, um. I may have some environmental consultants, engineers that I work with that I would certainly, you know, if you send me what this is, I'll, I can reach out to them and say, hey, you know, give me a ballpark idea or maybe they can even give me a quote, you know?
Environmental partners, uh, their, uh, their proposal has a pretty good breakdown of everything that's involved. I just forward it to you.
Alright. I'll circulate that with a couple of environmental companies I work with. I don't know, Dave, if you know, you have any.
I was going to say the same thing, uh, but you hit the nail on the head, kind of, I think their liability, um, factor kicks in. In fact, I know one company that, you know, they're like a five thousand minimum, that was their starting price, not at zero, so you know, and, and they'd actually kind of write that in to the proposal, um, you know, which I don't think is right, but that's what they claim it takes, so I, I don't know, like, you know. That, that was a year or two ago, um, but yeah, no, we should look at it and, uh, you know. We might find they're cheaper than, uh, other places too.
If nothing else, we did our due diligence, you know.
Correct.
As a, as a board.
Um, the only other, uh, the, another thing that I'd like to discuss is, um, I want to let you guys know that, uh, the last rotating assembly for the pump stations is, uh, being rebuilt as we speak. And when that's installed, all the rotating assemblies at both Commercial and Auburn Street will have been replaced. And all of the electric motors have been sent out and rebuilt, they're all new bearings, the windings have been redone and they've been cleaned and redipped. Um, at that point, we will have, uh, a rotating assembly at Auburn Street and a rotating assembly at Commercial Street that, uh, are rebuildable, but we, um, I'll probably hold off rebuilding them um, until I finish the rest of the upgrades at the stations, um, and, uh, still want to get a, um, um, channel grinder for Commercial Street because it only has one. And, um, we are, the other thing is we got to, I got to think about replacing the dioxide system at, um, Auburn, well, it's, it's for Auburn Street, but it's fed, it starts at Commercial, um, because the, uh, um, the, the poly tank is, is, is past its, uh, uh, basically time in the sun, okay, um, it's past the, the rating that it's done. Um, but, you know, the, um, with, with the pumps done and the motors done, those, you know, all the, the guys did all of that work themselves. Um, and, you know, I think it resulted in a substantial savings as, as opposed to having a company come in and do it.
What's that, what's, uh, what's that tank go for Dennis, do you know, roughly?
What's that, what's, uh, what's that tank go for, Dennis, do you know, roughly?
With the, with the delivery system with it is it's, and the thing was. The way we do it now is I pay a premium for bi- dioxide because the tank we have does not, does not hold a full tractor trailer load. So I, I could increase the size of the tank, um, not as far as around, but I could make it taller. And then to the point where I could, you know, could accept it, uh, um, a full load.
Yep.
Okay, and, and I could, we could, I, I believe I figured, I had the figures, uh, you know, spent a while. But it was, it was like twenty-three cents or twenty-seven cents per gallon saving. Buying a complete load as opposed to a partial load. Other words, I pay the same for a partial load, whatever they can fit in the tank, so if it's a twenty, it's a twenty-eight hundred gallon tank. You know, and if they show up in, in with, uh, twenty-eight hundred gallons, um, but their tanker truck is, let's say, a five thousand gallon tank, tanker truck. You know, I pay for that.
Right.
Just the savings per gallon over time would pay for the tank.
Exactly.
You know, so.
The thing is, yeah, it gets back into the bidding, um, you know, the thing is not a lot of people solve.
That, that's okay, but I, you know, and I, I think I discussed this with you before. That over ti-, we have to purchase the tank in the system anyways.
Right.
So we should certainly go with the bigger tank so that we can save money and, in a sense. Pay for the tank and pay for the system.
Yep, I agree, um, like right now that, um, basically I wanted to, you know, let you aware, make you aware though. That we'll hu- hold off on rebuilding the last of the rotating assemblies until we get, we make sure we got enough money to do the other stuff.
Yep.
We can rebuild it, we can always rebuild them later, um, because, you know, the three that are, that are there now have all been, one on this brand, uh, one at each station is brand new and two have been rebuilt. So the ones that, that are, that are, that come out now will be the spares. After the rebuild.
And they'll be shelved.
Yes, they'll, we always had one on the shelf until last time, the last time they, they, they eliminated one.
Yeah, we need to have one on the shelf, that's, makes sense.
Um, the only other thing I have is, um, uh, Brad Dootes is, um, uh, he's, um, has all his licenses for, um. Um, ru- um, class A operator, you know, class one operator. And, um, you know, maybe not at this meeting, but in the future, I'd like the board to, uh, consider, uh, making him a first-class operator.
Why not at this meeting?
That's up to you.
Be me too, Elaine.
Uh, I, I, I make a motion that we, uh, upgrade Brad Dootes to a class one operator effective tomorrow. You know, if, I'll jump in on that, the only thing about that is technically you have to post any job openings. So you can't just promote somebody without posting the job. And if anybody wants to apply for it, it's, it's just a hoop and there's probably, and I think Dennis and I already talked about this, might not even be another guy in the whole department.
That was my next question, is there anybody else qualified?
Well, I'm not sure off the top of my head if somebody's sitting over there with a, with a hydraulic license that isn't getting paid for it, but. It's, it's just, uh. You know, it's just something, you know, to, to keep with the way you're supposed to do it.
Right, I agree with Bruce.
You gotta post.
And that's, Bruce, that's a position, this isn't just like an increase. You know, like we do step increases and things like that, it, doesn't this just, or is it, or is it a position?
It's actual position.
An actual position.
Yeah, he's a B operator now, so moving him up to class A operator is a whole different job classification, not for step, part of a job here.
Good.
Start posting.
Okay.
The next meeting, hey, we'll vote him in.
Yeah. You know, we can do retroactive too, you know.
Yeah.
What the board wants. Right, so we'll put that on the agenda for next meeting, Amy, Brad.
So I'm doing anything with that motion that just happened, it's gonna be tabled.
No, it's not, I, I, I retract the motion.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else, Dennis?
Um, I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but.
It's alright.
To be clear on that, Brad's a good man, he, he deserves to get moved up, I had him in highway for quite a while, he's a good guy, so I'm all for him getting it.
Yep.
Procedure.
Yeah, and except we can do a retro, we can do a retroactive.
Exactly.
You know, to get him home.
Yeah, applies to, for sure.
Um, just. It's just kind of a shout out to the whole department, we're kind of getting, you know, slammed there with storm after storm after storm after storm, Super Bowl Sunday. You know, all that, so, you know, thank you to the crews and you guys and, you know, I'm sure it's all hands on deck and everybody. You know, doing what they gotta do and, uh, you know, you're, it's a thankless job and I'll just leave it at that. But we certainly, I appreciate it a, as a, as a resident and, and sitting on the board, so.
Second motion.
That's not an easy, easy thing to do, especially when it's, you know, it seems like every other day and then you're cleaning up the storm the next day and then. There's another storm, so.
Yeah, and on that note, I, I, you know, we did have a full participation in Super Bowl Sunday, which you never know, you know, you call a guy. In late in the afternoon on Su- Super Bowl Sunday, they have them come in and they may have had previous plans or whatever, but we had full participation. Except for, uh, one guy, but he was actually out of state, so we knew he was unavailable before that.
Um, one other thing I'd like to say is, uh, during my, uh, you know, when I'm, I'm out with the COVID. That, uh, the, you know, the guys, they all, you know, uh, took care of things in a professional manner. And I, uh, uh, basically handled things, you know, as far as appointments and, and, uh, and getting things done and staying busy. Um, um, uh, you know, Bruce and Amy and, um, they checked up on me on a regular basis and I've heard from several of you guys too. And I just want to say thank you to, uh, you know, to the guys and, and, uh, and, and Amy and Bruce.
Glad you're back.
Definitely.
Dennis who?
Yeah.
It's just a voice, the only other, um, just, and we don't have to go into, um. Are you guys meeting or have you met with FinCom in town meeting warrants and articles, I did, that, I'm assuming that started before. The end of the year and it's probably getting finalized. That there'll be, maybe for the next meeting, we'd have a list of, okay, what, what is or what isn't. What made it?
Um, my, my articles are pretty much still the same, I mean, I want, I want enforcement, I want to, uh, I put in an article for one new truck, all that, although, um. I might have to do more competitive bidding with that and, um, we need, you know, if, 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 uh, I would pu- have a, at least a placeholder article for the building.
Okay.
You know, other than that, I'm, I'm still, I'm still spending money from, you know, um, uh, uh, two years ago. It was appropriated, like, you know, so Auburn Street and, and, uh, and, um, Commercial Street, the pump rebuilds, there's still funds left in that.
On my side, we've set up, uh, we set everything up to the FinCom in the, uh, Capitol Committee. Um, and we have, my, my appointment with them is, I, I think it's in late March, actually go over my, uh. Request, my Capitol request, uh, I may withdraw, I put in for a tractor to groom the ball fields in the Park Pass. And I may withdraw that, I have quite a few articles I presented and we may be able to, um, resurrect the tra- the old tractor we have in the yard. Ryan's been looking at and he's, seems like he might be able to rig something up, so. Um, and we've taken delivery, speaking of articles, we've taken delivery of the two utility body trucks. Uh, you know, one for the water and sewer division, the one for the highway division and we're just. Waiting for McLaughlin to actually get their check so we can get them registered in, um, the titles.
Good. Okay. Um, Amy, you got anything, you good?
Um, nope, just have a few things I need you guys to sign tomorrow, um, especially those trash packets that were voted, I know Mary Beth, um. Is anxious to get those, uh, tomorrow, so I don't know if anybody, first thing in the morning to come sign for me, I would appreciate it.
I'll be in in the morning.
I'll be around all day tomorrow, I'll be driving around.
Thank you, the earlier the better, that you can get there would be great.
Alright, I'll be there first thing.
Thank you.
Driving around all morning, uh, all, all day, huh?
Pretty much.
You can shovel my driveway, it'd be a feel-good moment.
Uh, by the way, Wayne and, uh, Dave, good job with your backgrounds, you guys are so good.
Driving.
Wayne keeps changing him, Mike, I, I don't even know how to get it, he keeps.
Wayne's got a, a, a video, a gif, I guess.
Havoc was my hair, a win.
He's got waves.
Win, you win, I give up.
It's where I want to be, it's not where I am.
There you go.
Um, so next meeting would be March ninth.
Sounds good. Yeah, it's be the second Tuesday, that's, that's a good one.
Yep, it'll be the second Tuesday, um, hopefully we can. Resolve a couple of things and. Um, anyone else on the board have anything, any? Speak now. Alright, I guess with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Wayne, there's a second, second by Dave, Wayne.
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mark? You're on mute, but.
No.
I said yes.
No. I saw you shaking.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Alright, we are adjourned.
Alright.
Gentlemen and lady, thank you, thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.
Be safe.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy, Bruce, Dennis.
Thank you.
Get you later.
Stop this.